All right, well, Gavin will help you. Please stand to pledge allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, so we do our perfunctory stuff here so we can get to the speakers. Approval of minutes from the previous meeting.
We approve.
Second.
We have a motion and a second to approve the minutes from the previous meeting. Do we have any additions or corrections? Seeing none, all in favor, vote by saying aye.
Aye.
Put the same sign. Motion carries. Approval of the agenda. Anything to add? I don't think Kevin will be here, no.
Okay.
He, they were putting the bridge into me. So, I actually work on a lot.
Motion to approve.
Okay.
Second.
Motion and second to approve the agenda. All in favor, vote by saying aye.
Aye.
Put the same sign. Motion carries and the agenda is set. First on the agenda, we have our District 15 legislators. I appreciate you both coming in and visiting with us and for, I think Ed set it up, correct?
I called Candy. She was awesome.
Well, thank you Candy for setting up. I appreciate you coming in to visit about the upcoming legislative session. Obviously, you know, from the county perspective, we have some things we want to discuss when it comes to different finances and things like that, but anything you would like to start with in terms of an overview of where you think things are going, or?
Well, I'm Haley's son, but I tell him to call the commissioner, don't call me, Adam.
So they were calling you, so there were.
Anyway, I think, I think he has, has some information. He's on the budget section, so he'd probably more what you want here, not glad to try and answer any questions you may have and stuff, but we, I'm glad we've got Social Services on the direction we did when we did for the area of the state.
Thank you, thank you very much.
It was a long battle to get there and it's like only when it came together, it finally kind of came together. Maybe Ron has a different perspective than how it's come together, but it's either combined to the commissioners.
I think, well, Ed and I both sit on the Social Services Board. We were just visiting about it last night at our meeting that, you know, we felt it's worked really well. We've been happy with the results. Obviously, we're kind of, I don't, anxious isn't the word, but interested to see how the, you know, they're working on the plans for the, kind of the redo of the whole system and trying to streamline everything. So it's going to be interesting to see where that goes, basically.
All, all the counties then benefit in the same way. I mean, right on there, you're, okay, I'll do your column coming out, it's the different look brands is able to do it for population.
Yeah.
Our goal is to help brands in this one.
I guess, from, I guess, I would guess from the whole commission's perspective, we would reiterate that we would, we would like to keep that funding in place. We were just talking about it around the end this morning. If, the way we're budgeted right now, if that funding were to go away, even if they put the 20 mils back in so we can tax it, we would be, we couldn't get enough money. We would be capped on mils.
You know, the direction the legislature's gone now for four sessions are so, property tax relief to come back. And by identifying how we're going to send that money back, and we went as K-12 education, get it back for property tax. Really, so that's over a billion dollars to come to the state, you know. Some deal and then probably right to slow, we probably shouldn't be in the business of paying property tax, but we could identify it as K-12 funding that comes back there and so there's still some that are a little resistant on it, but it's a way of getting money back to the, well, we had a lot of mine, it's a way of getting money back to the people of North Dakota, you know, so seeing where, instead of reinvesting it, getting other programs going that we'd have to sustain. I mean, you folks probably more than anybody understand, if you get a program going, it has to be sustained. That money has to come from somewhere, and you might have so many places that money can't come to themselves. So we're still, we're still doing that, we're still in the property tax relief business and as that goes away, that'd be, that'd be tough too for the, for the counties.
I know, I got, I got one question to ask. I don't know if you can answer or give us an idea, I suppose, I hope. Do you think they'll leave the county employees, the social service employees with the county? The, you know, the state don't already want those employees, do they?
I, just off the top of my head, I would say no, it's all, no, the retirement program's trying to go with that. Maybe Dave, you've had that conversation, or you're for not budget, but I don't know.
We got some, you know, more of a concern that one, so, you know, like ease your conscience and ease mine also, so.
Probably the best person to ask that of would be Terry Trainer. And see what, you know, if they have, if the Association of Counties is interested in, you know, pushing certain issue, but I think they were very happy to get it where it is now. I, I guess, I don't, don't envision a lot of changes to that.
You haven't heard a lot of changes.
Okay.
No, that doesn't mean something won't pop up, but usually by this time, if there was something in the wind, we'd certainly hear about it.
I know Rhonda's on the committee down there, named that number of times, right Rhonda?
Yep.
If she could give us an idea of what maybe Terry Trainer's thinking, you feel like, don't you?
Well, yeah, he's on the admin committee for the Senate, Bill 2206, but I think we've kind of got the idea that there are some legislators that think we should be, since they're paying the bill, we should be county, or excuse me, state employees. The, I don't have the resolution from the North Dakota Association of Counties in front of me, so I think we would like to stay as responsive county employees, local control and responsive to local needs because of, it seems that when you get to be a state agency, you can't be as responsive to things that are happening in your community, to the police, the sheriff's department, the police department, that type of thing. Local needs as far as food pantries, you know, those are all done with local food, homeless shelters, those are all local issues that we deal with, with our workers, so. And to stay nimble, you know, it's really difficult to get up the, the food chain, for lack of a better word, to get money to do X, Y, Z with a family. We make those decisions, you know, pretty quickly locally now, so. Off the top of my head, that would be what I would say.
Other than the programs, I just interrupt a little bit, Rhonda's attended care, how well that's worked for us in this county, and could you give us a little update on that, Rhonda?
Um, it's going really, really well. We actually have borrowed it out to a few agencies and, I don't know if you'd say made some money, but at least paid the rent back for some of the, Steel County, Eddie Foster Wells has used it, Tribal Social Services has used it, so we've, we've, we've done well with that and it's responsive. We haven't, I think there was one child that there was a mistake with, the, actually the Toner County Sheriff was told that we didn't have a staff person that was storming and actually if he would have told the staff person, he would have came and got the person, because he would have driven it, because he was driving down here anyway. He would have picked her up and taken her to the school for the deaf, so I think we got that cleared up. But, you know, it's been really good for law enforcement as well as for those kids where we don't have anywhere for them to go, unfortunately, that happens.
Okay, I just feel, I think it's a good example that if the state took over the employee, you know, for social service, programs like that would just fall by the wayside because, you know, there wouldn't be the local interest, the local taking care of the programs. I, I think it's a very good idea to leave the social service workers with the county. I mean, I mean, they've been faithful to the county and the county have been faithful to them, you know. I'm just a little nervous about that, I guess.
Well, and that was, that was, I don't know, was a fear, but it was a concern when the idea first came up two, three sessions ago, when the Association of Counties came out with the idea in the first place. You know, that, it was a concern that you'd lose that local, not necessarily controlled, but input and quick response and that type of thing. So I, you know, I suspect that, that if that was looking like it might possibly go away, that there would be lots of county commissioners talking to their legislators. I don't, I wouldn't see that happening.
Okay. I'm glad we visited about it, so, I mean, it eases a lot of minds, I feel. I know Rhonda's been concerned, I know that down, our whole board has, so, I'm glad we brought that up.
I think I would be concerned across North Dakota, pretty much, not all the world, but a lot of the world.
Yeah, there's, yeah, there's concern in some of the smaller counties. Obviously, we're never going to lose a physical presence here, but some of the smaller counties are obviously concerned about losing a physical presence, losing that office in county and, you know, at the courthouse or whatnot. I, I, you know, I think that's going to be a, I don't think it's a concern necessarily, but it's something that they're going to want to make sure that it's in, have to make sure they need to keep physical presence. Yes, I can understand that, too. Uh, I guess from there, from Social Services, one of the big ones, I guess, would be obviously, you know, where the, the big push for the infrastructure change and how they fund the funding, or, you know, the, the big pots of money idea. I'm sure Dave can, can touch on that, being he's part of the budget section, so the budgets come together.
You have maybe seen, McConney, this, this is, this is not carbon and granite, but it is, it is a product of, of, oh, let me grab one pretty good. This is a product of the, leadership of the Senate and the homicide. Senator Wardner, of course, is of an oil country and, you know, back when we passed the biggest legislation to help the oil-producing counties, the nine producing counties out there, I remember carrying out, it was a $1.35 billion funding package that dealt with infrastructure, including cities and counties and schools and townships and everything, in the nine oil-producing counties. The, and that, that was a big dollar beginning, it wasn't, wasn't the only one. The next ones weren't quite as large for them, but the idea at the time was, they needed help, you know. They, they had roads that were just deplorable when it came to all that oil traffic and, and so their needs were way above anything that was happening in the rest of the state. But we knew that those needs would eventually be met and they wouldn't need as much. So the result, this session is going to be this proposal and, you know, numbers could change on this and if you're, if you're going, gee, where's the county, where's Ramsey, where's Toner? Uh, you know, the very back page of this, you know, I've got little hash marks by communities and cities and stuff that are affected, you can kind of get the idea of the, of the dollars that would be coming out of this way. Like I said, the, this is not, the numbers are not necessarily carbon and granite. For one thing, the, you know, the second page is kind of points out that the assumption in this proposal is 50 to 50 per barrel and of oil production, and of course, it's higher than that now. So, because of that, whatever, whatever those numbers are going to be, that could reflect and change even if nothing else changed, but you got to remember, this is going to go through a legislative session and people will come in with more ideas and more things, and how long can we do this? Or what if we change this formula a little bit to give, you know, more money to townships or something? But at this point, townships would be getting, you know, a candidate piece and, and this, this, uh, this presentation you see in front of you is not for anybody in the oil-producing counties, this is for everybody else. So the oil-producing counties are still going to have dollars flowing for them, but they're not going to have as much as before. Someone, more than one person has said, well, this must be coming onto the legacy fund, and it's not. It's coming out of oil production tax dollars. It is not affecting the legacy fund at all. And, you know, our, you know, people talk about that legacy fund as a, well, kind of a, another bucket, but I'll tell you what, the, the better we can build that without tapping into the corpus of that legacy fund, the better off we're going to be in the future. And when I talk about the future, thinking, you know, our kids, our grandkids, they're the ones that are really going to benefit from that legacy fund. In 2010, when that was voted on, everybody kind of understood that we wanted to build this up. That's why we couldn't touch it until 2017. Last session was the first time that the legacy fund, the interest on that money was available to the legislature and we did use some. We needed to, because well production had dropped off, you know, they, the, there was more activity in other parts of the country, other, other oil plays were doing better and they were fracking. You know, we had something like 1,400 wells waiting to be fracked at the beginning of this year. And of course, they're fracking like crazy, no, but it wasn't until the oil price started coming back up. And we have, oh, real and serious competition from oil plays in Texas. You know, the Permian Basin is, it's a big oil play, too. It's, it's not as prized of an oil. If I brought my little vial here and basked it around, it smells like it could go right in your gas tank. You know, it is, what we have in the bucket is so pure, it makes, it takes very little refinery and that's one of the reasons that we get a better price of it on it. And the other reason we get a pretty good price is because of the pipeline. That Davenport pipeline is pumping something like 350,000 barrels a day. That takes a lot of trucks off the road. That helps us not have to give so much money to the western part of the state so we can start sharing more. Could these numbers get bigger? I would say if anything, these numbers will get bigger, you know, the 280 million may, may grow. But it will, it will take cooperation between the House and the Senate. You know, I don't know, I'm not sure what the government's office is going to come out with a recommendation on this. Nothing surprises me coming out of there, but, you know, it might, might just give it its lesson, too. But I, you know, if there's any questions that I can, you know, clear idea of muddy water up there, you know, there certainly is going to be an effort to get, to get dollars and cents back here. It's not going to give you all the relief you need, but there still is, you know, other grants and that type of thing available to. I see, when I talked to the Department of Congress, a couple of those guys were in town the other day and they, they really liked the idea of having, of having a pot of money that they can actually respond with quickly without having the legislature say, it's got to be used for this or not, you know. The Jay Shulard was the director, you know, he started that last session. He convinced us to be able to give him about, I think it was 350 million or something, that he'd be able to respond quickly to something that might come up in the middle of an injury. Well, they'd like to see a little bit more of that. Frankly, I, I don't think that's a bad idea. My biggest complaint about Congress Department is sometimes we pass legislation and want the funding to go to something and then they take it and it, and six months later, when they come out with their rules for it, it makes it hard for the recipient of the grant to make the damn thing work. You know, that's what I shared with, with those guys last week, that, you know, you need to give the blessing to legislature on your rules, too, because sometimes it makes it so difficult, the recipient can't handle it and can't get it done, or you change the rules partway through, you know, that is just not something that should happen because I shouldn't have to be calling you up and, and imploring you to, to make it right. You know, when, when the intent of the legislature is to give, you know, some agency 300,000 dollars for a program, don't make it so hard they can't do it. People ask about major state funds. That's kind of our flow chart for revenue sources and, and distributions. I only hold it up, but, I mean, seriously, it is, it is a chart and it, it actually makes, it makes sense when you dive into it and dig into it, but it's, it's not a picnic the first couple of times you look at it, believe me.
I know it'd be very difficult to speculate, but with the money that was scheduled to go to townships and was vetoed, any likelihood of that happening with something like this?
Well, there is township money at, you know, 100, 150 million and that, that, those dollars are dedicated to the non-oil-producing townships. You mean, are you talking about last year's?
No, I, I'm talking about, you know, would the governor be so inclined to do an item veto and knocking that off and like he did before with that, with the township money? You know, like I said, it's hard to speculate. And here, here's where the need come, is going to come in, I think, is, is what we're seeing is, is on the, the townships in the rural areas, is these roads are drying up, like the water is going down in these roadsides and the ones that were built up, the culvert's way up here now outside the water, and they're looking, they're going to have to put probably a lower one in to have water conveyance to that road or they're going to have to, would like to, you know, maybe build up some roads that are coming out of water and, you know, townships don't have the money to do that. 10,000 dollars doesn't go a very long way, but it would go a long way for, you know, bringing our rural communities back home and our producers, you know, an easier way to access milks and rural residents, a, an easy way to, you know, access their farmsteads or what have you and emergency services and school buses being able to, to do that if you're able to get some of those roads that were in water and build them back up again.
Well, the, the biggest part that concerns me, and I'm sure it concerns Dennis and Greg, too, is that FEMA dollars that we utilized extensively to build roads up forced us to choose. And they made it pretty clear at the time that, that road that's underwater, that you're not using, we're not, we don't want to put any money into that later either. You know, they, now, could they, they have different leadership and stuff all the time. Could they change their mind, I don't, or maybe they forgot that? But there was a time when, well, this occurred here, at the time it occurred, Dennis and I, every week, we were on a phone call with the Denver office and Bismarck, you know, working, you know, particularly out in the, out in the counties with these towns.
And it's not just going to be Ramsey County or the doubles like basin. I think that whole eastern third of North Dakota, you know, was considered in a wet cycle for, you know, the last 25 years and whether or not that pattern has shifted or not, well, yet to be seen, I think. But if it, if it does, there's going to be a lot of counties from that Highway 281 west or even Highway, you know, 30 or so back east looking for some, some additional dollars, hopefully to make those, some of those township roads whole. And like you said, you made a valid point, Dave, with FEMA dollars, if they were used to, you know, do that road or, or another road within that area, they're going to say no. And I, I can't say that I blame them, you know, it's not an emergency, we're not flooding, we're not, we're just going the opposite way and we'd like to make some of those roads whole again.
Well, we've seen minds change in the past, so if you ever know if we.
I've got a question for you guys, commissioners if you run into, because I have, that posed to me and I haven't thought of an answer yet, but a farmer has, his leg's spun down now. He has high ground, his farm, and they still can't get to it. Can he put a grade, can he put his own grade into that high area so he can get back there and start farming? Or is somebody going to stop him from way across that?
Is he on a section line?
That I don't know, I'd have to find out.
And use his own funds?
Yeah, he's going to use his own equipment.
Owns the land?
He owns the land, he's standing on the land, but he, he can't get to it unless he puts a grade in. Again, he's, I put my own grade in, but he says, can I be out on that lake that's full and all the?
I don't know, he's paying taxes on it, right? That would be my thinking, for that Dallas State's party.
I'd have to get that out of the path.
Nothing but.
I mean, if you're, if you're paying taxes, I think it's a done deal.
And that's why I'm.
If you're paying taxes, I can't even imagine how many commissioners saying you can't do it.
Fair, fair example of desperate forgiveness of the commission.
By the way, you know landlords that have done that, out on North Dan, have.
This is, I think where we're talking is up, up over on North Pass side.
1,500 loads of dirt that Dale and Joel had put in.
Right.
Yeah.
Substantial.
Substantial, yep, yeah, but they're able to access another 2,000, 2,500 acres, but so.
If he's up in that same area, another guy's got a high spot like that, he's going to have to put a grade in to get there, you want to be put his own grade in or somebody's going to get it.
There's, I just heard the other day, a guy over in Nelson County, he got 2,200 acres back because they set up that drainage project over there and it goes out in Q's who and he's getting in the forestry. And they got palm stations set up and they're lowering the elevation that much and he got that much back.
And it probably would depend a lot on how it's going to drain. You know, it's one thing to put in a road, it's another thing to put in a road without a culvert or anything so you're, there, the water backs up on the other guy, you know, that, you know, the state and the feds are not going to look at that in a, you know, good light.
Nope.
Oh, you, you know, it's still up to the township, you know, it's really their call, not the county, unless it's involving more than one township, but if it's within that township, there's not much to come, you know. If they okay it, township supervisor's okay it, like, no lie, we'd have much to say about it. And they, they do what they want within that township. I wouldn't want to go to argue about that.
I didn't want to start, even going with this question, I'd be, kind of wildlife groups or, I mean, who's all involved here, that the study saw on, what's you guys, if did you run into yet? Karen, you have, you have heard of what happened, so.
And I think it'll continue happening, you know, because the land they're getting back is, is very productive land. Yep, you know, as soon as you get all that debris off it, a lot, a lot of logs and every other piece of trash that's imaginable, yeah, but, yeah, growing crops and making money again, yeah.
I think part of the concerns we have is the counties switch pages is, is a lot of portions, uh, you know, which is, you know, I wonder what the bill's here today. 106,000, 760 dollars, just for a month. The only avenue we have to get, you know, money on it, I don't know what it is, property taxes, you know, that's why we're pursuing the old rule, you know, and see if we can talk our constituents into, you know, that.
No, I was going to feedback off of what you were going to say, because that was the question that I was going to ask.
So what's happening as far as security, I don't know, the things you've gone and do last year, is that our security's good? Forget federal prisoners?
Nope, we had, but usually we put the camera and intercom system in and we're working on getting that for tonight. We're not off our closure notice now, since we had our suicide. We've been, they got to wait for a toxicologist examination to come back. And if that's clear, then I guess it's going to take a couple of months for that to get back. And if that's clear, then we could take BIA prisoners and there's a long list of them they want to release. That would help, bring some revenue, but it's our own county's prisoners. We're averaging like 60 prisoners, just in Ramsey County. You know, when you get a bill of 106,000 dollars on the month, we've got a lot of incarcerations just from our own county. I mean, we put money into drug force programs and undoubtedly it must be working because we're getting a lot more incarcerations there, but I think we need to look at. But I, I think we need to look at some type of help for these counties that are getting hit. Like Benson gets hit hard from their population, and their bill runs around, what, thirty-five, forty thousand a month? So theirs is probably double along with ours. Powell County, theirs went up, Nelson's went up. The drug task force is working, it is definitely working. Incarceration numbers, this is where we were at in two thousand eleven, Kerry? We were, we were averaging about twenty-one, and now at eighteen, we're averaging forty-three. So it's doubled in seven years. So it's, you know, I think, I know the board is totally convinced that it's the druging force, the drug force that we put in place, you know, and the county went along with it. Nelson went along with it, Benson, Powell went along with it. We all feel it's helping, you know. I know, I just, this amount has cost on account of, for this. And the number one reason we're raising our bills in the county is law enforcement, so. And we can only put ten bills on according to the century code, and then over above that, you gotta take it out of the general. And so we'll be taking ten out of the center, the normal ones, who's gonna bring in about six hundred thousand. And we're gonna need ten more, and we're still gonna be a little short, aren't we, can't, you know?
Are we in an order of amount for our population area? Maybe if you're here at Fargo, for instance, or.
Total, are those your total arrests, or?
Well, I don't know, drug, drug related or capital, incarcerations, yeah.
That'd be a question for the state's.
Well, that'd be a question, yeah, arrests. I can tell you that we certainly have a lot of drug cases that come through the state's attorney's office or drug related type cases, so like the thefts of property, the burglary, almost, almost all of them tie back to substance use. For our filings, at least in Ramsey County, I think, starting in two thousand twelve, I at least have statistics, we were on six hundred and seventy-five criminal cases filed. Two thousand thirteen was seven hundred and some, two thousand fourteen, seven eighty-three. Two thousand fifteen, seven thirty-one, during the protest year of less, we dropped down to six hundred and eight, just because I think it'll lack a lot enforcement resources. Two thousand seventeen, seven hundred and fifty-eight, and projected this year, eight hundred and thirty-two. So it's increasing.
So.
We're probably higher, I would think, and I think that's because of certain factors that maybe are a little more unique to Ramsey County. CDC's website says that for every hundred people that reside in Ramsey County, there's a hundred and twenty point four opiate prescriptions written. So for every hundred people, there's a hundred and twenty prescriptions written. We're pretty high up there, I mean, when you compare like Wayne County, Michigan, which, you know, seems to be the heart of kinda that problem, we're almost on par with what they have for prescriptions written. That's probably a variety of factors, I know we had a presentation with some attorneys who talked about, memory serves me correctly, it was two thousand eleven where there was some change in the pharmaceutical or the manufacturing. And if I'm remembering the year right, it certainly shows in the numbers that we have.
There likely are gonna be quite a few changes nationwide relative to opioid use. I noticed Tennessee, in Tennessee, Blue Cross and Blue Shield no longer will pay for opium, for oxycontin. So.
That's probably a good idea, huh?
Well, I see, that has nothing to do with legislation. This is an insurance company trying to do, trying to do something to reduce the use of oxycontin. They, they have some wiggle room in their rules addressing like someone who's, you know, eighty years old who might die in a month or something, you know, that type, and, you know, there, and certain illnesses. But, but basically, if you're, you know, they, they are just going to say, no, there are alternatives that, that they are recommending that they will pay for that are, that you can't take as a, you know, a user and break it up and mash it up and make it into something more powerful, it just doesn't work for some reason. But I thought that's a pretty good approach that I plan on talking to our insurance department and also, you know, so. Because, you know, just that type of thing, maybe curtail things a little bit.
It might curtail, the other thing too, I think that, and I'm gonna confess, I don't know what's on everybody's agenda coming forward, but there's pretrial services that maybe could decrease the amount of time that we have people initially incarcerated. There's treatment that obviously treatment facilities are probably more successful in certain respects compared to correctional centers. Certainly, it makes a difference, I think, on what types of crime you're looking at. But it would be interesting, at least something I would be interested in finding how, how many people that we have sitting in custody waiting for some type of disposition on their keys that results actually in further confinement. So if somebody's sitting in there on a pretrial reason because they don't like to come back, you know, to court if they're released on some type of a bond or those other services, that maybe would be less expensive. Maybe somebody's looking at statewide, I don't know.
Can I, wanna ask a question?
Of course.
Kerry, you know what the reoffend rate is on, on those that are being returned back to jail due to, due to drugs or?
Statistic wise, no, but I, the last eighteen months or so that I've been here, see familiar faces very frequently coming back in, be it on bond violations or new, new charges or failure under probation, those types of things. The other thing too is we also have people that, you know, the Department of Corrections has their own plan. And so sometimes there's a leg going, and somebody is sentenced to the Department of Corrections where it may be seven days, it may be fourteen years before they're able to be transported to an correction store, whatever reason, you know, the hierarchy that they're operating under, so. But it's certainly, certainly in our area and certainly impacts everything from, from state's community's perspective to law enforcement perspective, to social services perspective. And it's, it's in families and exploding, and it doesn't matter how old you are. You could be twelve, you could be seventy, you're coming with the same issues, so.
I, I think that, you know, I'm slowly diving into it, trying to get as many statistics as I can, but from our region, but then I wanna start looking at other jails across the state, other counties to see. And obviously, there's things that are gonna shift back and forth, but, I mean, a good way to look at, not a great way to look at it, but a quick way to look at it is, like, like Kerry said, in, in two thousand twelve, we had six hundred and seventy-five cases filed that were criminal. And at that point in time, we had eight thousand one hundred and seventeen mandates. So that's, that works out to about twelve mandates per, you know, case that's filed. Now, that's obviously not perfect, but it's, it gives you an idea. Today, we're at fifteen, we're on projection for fifteen thousand six hundred and forty-four mandates on eight thirty-two, which is eighteen mandates per case. So are we either getting more convictions or there's pressure down from the state because the state, you know, the corrections department can't take them immediately? Or I, I don't know what the.
We're holding them longer.
We're holding them longer, I, I don't know where the disconnect is, and that's where we need to do some more research and keep digging into it to see what's going on. But at the end of the day, what it comes down to is we're housing so many people and we need to do something to quit housing people and work it on the front end instead of the back end. And unfortunately, locally, our answer tied from the aspect of how much money we have to work on the front end. I mean.
The place we gotta dip into is the property taxes.
Yeah.
You know, that's it. And I know everybody wants law enforcement, I mean, they, they wanna be secure, I mean, that's, we even asked that question, I mean, that's what we need to do.
So your thoughts on recreational marijuana, probably?
The way the bill's written, it's always our, it's an absolute no-no.
It's a train wreck if that passes.
Oh, when things get put in the bill, as you, you don't really give a shit over pros inside, like joint.
The way it's written, I, I can't believe, we can't do something about that, the way these bills are written. Just like medical marijuana, I mean, it was written so vague that, I mean, I look at, it's taken about two years and, you know, but the legislators had to work in and lawyers had to look at it and get it right and so protect people. So, you know, it was usable. Here, this is another one of those things that just throw it out there, give them a bunch of signatures.
Pretty wide open, it's easy to go, pass security after capitalizing. What are you gonna do if that passes and someone just walks in the building and wants to light up? He said, well, we're talking about it, you know, I, what would you do if someone, if someone in this room decided they wanted to smoke weed? You know, like the way the bill's written, you wouldn't.
Do nothing.
The only.
Legally, you couldn't do nothing.
I don't know if you.
Other than smoking in a building, you can't do that, right?
No, honestly, you'd be able to.
Can't smoke in a building.
No, but marijuana is, that changes, that changes it.
They can smoke in a building without?
All it's written essentially is.
Not in center tobacco.
It's, it's written, it's, there's, there's a, there's a, there's a subsection in the, in the, in the, it's not a bill, it's a.
Referendum.
Referendum, whatever you wanna call it, that it states that any, any crime that would be derived from beholding, smoking, anything, production of marijuana is no longer a crime. So there's no crimes that might be related to marijuana that crosses out the century code areas where there's a, a crime involved. Now, the, the thing I would say is, and I, we have two legislators here, and, and you guys did a lot of work on medicinal marijuana. My guess is you would walk into the session on the first day and you would vote seventy-five percent over the top just to put it on hold until you could fix things.
But it's still too late.
No.
There'd be thirty days.
Yeah, well, we'd have, we'd have two months of craziness and then you would put it on.
Wefall says it goes into place in December one.
Yeah.
If it's passed. And there'd be thirty days.
Yeah, the legislators are in session.
There'd be, uh, wide open. I was listening to Wefall on the radio.
But you guys, you guys would attempt to fix it, though, we might not, obviously.
I didn't, I didn't mean to bring this up, but just on the conversation on incarceration and stuff, we're just gonna snowbile on to the problems.
Absolutely, absolutely, no question.
Just community leaders and legislators and stuff, it's what we got staring at us.
Where's a good, you know, depugnize it as a US marshal.
I could just pick up cows, Dave, I'd be fine, I'd get along with it, no problem, I can handle that.
Small cows.
Well, I, I'm curious, seeing as we've brought up home rule a couple of different times, one of the things that I would like to bring to your attention and get your thoughts on is in century code right now, the counties that, that pass home rule can't enact any kind of a lodging tax. I was wondering if there was ever the sense that that could be changed or should be changed?
Well, I would think that could be changed, I, I, I didn't realize that was a rule.
Yeah, so the, there, there are several different forms of taxation that a home rule powered, empowered county can, can enact. And, and a lodging tax, especially in a, in a sort of a tourist-based economy that we have around here, would be extraordinarily helpful, even perhaps above and beyond where a sales tax would be helpful. And so that was one of the things that when we were discussing the home rule charter, we sort of kept coming back to was that we hope that we could start a conversation with the state legislature and say, why, why don't you just open this up? Because in some ways, it, it is almost a little unfair that if you come into the, the city and you stay in lodging in the city, you pay a lodging tax and if you go right outside, well, now you don't have to. You know, it creates that sort of disparity, even though you're functionally going to the same place for the same reason. So I just, I just wanted to raise that to you.
From the years I spent on the Finance and Tax Committee, I don't think you'd have a problem with people's understanding and wisdom in that, because for one thing, they, they ain't paying it.
Right.
You know, the residents are not paying it, and somebody coming in from far away, hey. They, they pay it everywhere else they go, you know? They pay way more lodging taxes in other states and in other parts of the country than they do here and in Canada or wherever. So, I, people are, they're shocked that, that some of the things we do in our code where even, you know, everything is simple as a speeding ticket, you know, they're like, seriously? Twenty bucks or fifteen? You know, they just laugh. But with speeding tickets, a little different, 'cause there's the attitude of, well, we've gotta keep speeding affordable in our code.
It's a long time to get there.
Well, if you make it less portable, I'll turn in my red car up there.
Yeah, lodging is, you know, I, I don't, I, I'm surprised that it is in century code, I didn't realize it was.
I didn't know it was even, when we talked about one night, two months ago.
Something that can be changed and, and you find out real fast then why it probably is that way. But the only thing that made me nervous about the home rule thing, when I read your proposed charter is now you might have to deal with referred majors too. That didn't tickle my nerves much.
No, it didn't tickle mine either.
'Cause you can see the frustrations it causes, you know, the, the four majors that are on there right now, they're, they should all go down in flames. But chances are that that's not gonna happen.
Yeah, I think the, the sentiment of the, well, not all of, I'll say, I'll say that, that we definitely had long debates on merits and demerits of that. But I think the overarching sentiment, the reason that it ended up in the document was because we felt if we were granting more powers to the county commission, then we owed it to the electorate to grant them some powers to check that power. I mean, that was, that was the rationale. Now, could, could it potentially create an underprivileged situation? Sure, but that's democracy, right?
Well, it's more likely at our state level when that type of thing would happen because they come out of the woodwork from the places like California to fund an effort here just to get, just to be able to say they did it.
A lot of those very obnoxious things couldn't even be enacted at a county level anyway, right? I mean, the types of things that you're talking about that would be obnoxious, it's just the county doesn't have that broad of authority to make decisions.
That we, we set the, we set the signature level high enough, it's, it's much higher as a percentage of populace that votes and governs our election from the state. So it's gonna, you know, it's, it's a harder, it's a harder poll to try to attempt to make it happen. And at the end of the day, if, if it's abused, then we can change it.
Yeah, I mean, the, to amend the home rule, as I'm sure you guys are aware, it's a simple majority.
Oh.
So. It's a little harder than, or, you know, the, the statewide change would be obviously far harder than something like that, so. But we talked about that long, 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 long discussions on it.
So, but, but like I say, I think, and I've, I've had conversations with, you know, the Mertens boys and with Kyle Blanchfield and those types of people to ask them sort of, you know, could they see any issue with needing to have a sale, I mean, a lodging tax, excuse me? And they said exactly what you said, absolutely not, we're not paying it, we're just tacking on a bill and if somebody's paying a hundred bucks a night for a room, they'll pay a hundred, two dollars, a hundred and three dollars a night for the room. It's not gonna make any difference to them.
I just, I just, last night booked a room in Torago and I was looking at it, they got my printout, lodging taxes, eleven seventy-five for one night.
That adds up over a year for that.
I've got rooms occupied every evening, which it isn't, but, I mean, every.
Five nights a week, you know, they're getting that many.
So back to incarceration costs, you know, it wouldn't be an immediate fix, but maybe addiction, money for additional addiction, mental health facilities would go a long ways for the reoffenders down the road. Maybe an education program similar to the tobacco program that, that we're giving in the youth schools, you know, maybe to, to help the next generation as it comes up. But the addiction and the mental health issues, they're, they're, they're here now, they're, they're part of our problem that we're seeing now with the reoffenders and, and if we can get them the help and maybe get them off the, the drug of their choice, maybe hopefully that they don't start, they stop reoffending. And, you know, so like I said, it wouldn't be an immediate fix, but it may help down the road. And, uh, you know, so like I said, it wouldn't be an immediate fix, but it, uh, may help down the road.
Well, there is, there is some proposed legislation that we'll be dealing with. And it'll, you know, probably be initially dealt with in Human Services, but, uh, it would change a little bit the criteria for who can be counselors and that type of thing. And I know you, you know, there actually are some really progressive things happening in this community relative to working with addiction. And, you know, one of the things we, we, you know, that I'm sure is going to come out of that whole thing too is to find some money to pay for people that are doing the training right now, because right now they're doing it for free. You know, and, and it's costing them because they, you know, have to take time off from whatever their job is and, you know, in order to go to mine on a grand force or just do it right here and tell them, so, uh, you know, there, there certainly is a tension to that. And I, I don't believe I brought the copy of that proposed legislation for changing some of those definitions of what a counselor is for addiction purposes, but, uh, if, there may be some folks that argue a little bit about it, but, you know, I remember going over and talking to people at the Human Services Center. It doesn't seem like that many years ago, and that the way you got to be a addiction counselor is you're a recovered addict or, you know, a recovered drunk, you know, that was basically your main qualification. And, you know, it's not that way anymore and, and now you piled on so many education requirements and criteria and stuff, so the people, a lot of the people who would be very good at it and know it quite well, don't have the opportunity to do it, but. So, I think we have enough people to get the job done if we just loosen those things up a little bit.
You think that's possible, Dave?
Well, it's asked Rhonda.
I know what she's gonna tell you.
David also restricts people coming from out of state with a license and they have to jump through.
Yeah, we made them jump through.
To, to become licensed as a counselor, it's prohibited at this point.
What do you think, Rhonda?
A lot of turf words, there is a bill introduced to make a board similar to Nebraska and Missouri, and I'm, actually, I haven't read it completely, but looking at what Nebraska and Missouri does, they have a professional board where there are professionals that run it right now. There are just addiction counselors that get asked to donate their time to be on the addiction board, um, the Licensed Professional Counselor Board. And so I'm hopeful that I, I got appointed to the North Dakota Board of Social Work Examiners, had the first meeting. Um, I'm hoping that I don't serve another term, I'm hoping that we'll have a professional board with professional staff because they don't look at, they'll, you know, "We're not gonna look at this person from Puerto Rico." Well, why not? Because we don't wanna take the time, we don't have the time to look at their education from Puerto Rico. When that person is moving to North Dakota and wants to work as an addiction counselor and a social worker, it's just ridiculous. But that's what you get when you have, and I'm, I'm probably gonna get in trouble the next time I go back to the board, but it's frustrating because very territorial turf, there's not a good, um, addiction counselors and social workers and I'll include, because that's my profession, are two of the worst.
Okay, let me ask you this question, I think I've asked it before, but if they don't, if you don't have the degree, the board don't even look at you. Is that correct?
Well, well, depending, in, for social workers, you don't get grandfathered in anymore, and I don't think addiction counselors do either, and I'd have to look at theirs, but I know for sure for social workers, licensed professional counselors, there's no more grandfathering in. So, you're right, Dave, there aren't anymore of those people that have gotten a licensed grandfathered in. That was probably over in about late seventies, early eighties, so, you know, um, very frustrating. Um, so I'm hopeful for the board, um, it's volunteer for licensed professional counselors, licensed addiction counselors, you just go there and put in your time, so with a professional board, paid people looking at transcripts and, and looking at, um, reciprocity for licensure, I'm hopeful. And the, the bill for licensed social workers does look at reciprocity and, um, streamlining license. There's three levels of licenses in North Dakota for social workers. Addiction counselors, I, and psychologists, they're, I'll rank them, they're in the group of addiction counselors, psychologists and, um, social workers. We're a tough group to get into in North Dakota, and we're, we're crying for people to come here and then we don't, we're not really easy to get your license and work, it's, it's terrible.
We've noticed that too through, uh, you know, the recovery reinvented, free through recovery thing. You know, we have people willing to step up in the community that are, you know, maybe former addicts, things like that, that have gone through it, that know the, know how to get out the other side. And they, they've, they've taken time and, and money and effort out of their pockets to get trained, uh, as pure support specialists, and then they're not being utilized and there's no way to pay them, you know, a small stipend to, I mean, and, and it's, there's studies all over that show the efficacy of paying these people a little stipend and you'll get results. In, in concert with everything else around them, you know, so there's, there's all kinds of ways we can do it, but it's just, you know, it raises some bureaucracy.
Those could be the guys who go into the jails and, and talk to these guys.
That's what they're doing right now.
You know, incarcerating and tossing them out there, I mean, you have an adjacent problem at all.
That's what the F five project is doing right now, in Fargo, Bismarck, we have an F five house here in Devil's Lake. They're trying to go statewide with doing jail meetings, trying to, uh, start to, you know, determine who can come into the house so they already have contacts before they get out. I mean, they're, they're trying to create the model.
So, here about one, about one thing, I, uh, we had a drug addiction counselor that come to the state half a year ago trying to get licensed. And I agree with Rhonda, a lot of turf protection to all these boards, for a lot of them. But you know what, she couldn't get results and, and, uh, orca and other legislators in the governor's office. And that gal's got a temporary license so she can practice, and they told her the courses she needed to get certified in North Dakota. It's not fair to teach her what you already need, a little bit more education to come North Dakota, but they give her the courses she needs and she's taking the courses now, so she can come fully certified, but, but there is a situation where it wasn't getting nothing done with, with the group, you know, with the, with the board to get even an answer what she needed. But then we found out about it, it wasn't three, four days with the governor's office and she knows the courses she has to take and she's got a provisional, so she can work.
Good.
Well, I applaud you.
But nobody, nobody, it hasn't been brought to nobody's attention. We got five thirty, so much cut out on that.
No, that's fine, we appreciate the hour.
Did you have anything to say?
I'm just sort of listening. Well, we, we appreciate the hour so very much.
Glad to come back anytime, any next meeting or anything, glad to come back.
Well, I'm sure we'll talk to you plenty before the session and when the session starts, if you can come on that.
Thank you, thank you very much.
All right.
Thank you.
Appreciate it.
Thank you, guys.
I'll send it up to you on the phone over here. That's the agenda. Skip over, since it's not six o'clock, so the budget hearing. Uh, unfinished business, we don't have anything, so we'll skip by that. New business, forward Devil's Lake agreements. Well, thank you. I guess I can kind of lead in on this. Um, we've talked about it, I think, several times in the past. The city of Devil's Lake has, uh, had an agreement since forward Devil's Lake is its own entity. Uh, you know, it's its own five oh one C six or whatever the heck it would be, um, with, so they've always had an agreement on what, uh, duties forward Devil's Lake would do, how they're gonna get paid and all those kind of things. And the county, as best we could tell, has never had an agreement. Uh, so we felt as though it would probably be a good idea to at least look at one, draft one, get one put together. The agreement you have in front of you, uh, and have looked at is modeled after, pretty much exactly after the city of Devil's Lakes. I went through and, and myself and said, "Well, what, what does it do for us, what doesn't it do for us, what sections pertain and don't pertain to us?" And then passed it on to Carrie, Carrie fixed it up. Well, anyway, I don't know, whatever. We all worked on it, and this is, this is the finished product. Um, uh, yeah, so there's a couple, one section in there, I think, that's highlighted, that's a question maybe. What other?
The funds paid.
Yeah.
Front page?
Second page.
Second page?
Did you highlight that? I can't recall.
I don't recall.
Maybe just got highlighted by accident.
Yeah, I'm, uh, highlighted. Will you make a page?
What number is it?
Uh, it would be number three.
Three?
Yes.
The whole paragraph?
No, just, uh, starting at the funds paid by the county to forward Devil's Lake intended to assist in the payment of the employment of the full-time executive director. I'm trying to remember, you sent me an email back making notes.
I think I specifically just indicated what is the county looking for, what, what's the, what's the, you know, if the funds are given out under the agreement, what's the expectation of how those funds are gonna be used. I think that was an ultimate question on that paragraph.
Yeah, and, and in all honesty, when you look at all the wheress is on the front page, um, job development authorities are spelled out in century code specifically, what they can and cannot do. So, we're basically contracting with an outside nonprofit to do our JDA work, that's basically what it comes down to. But we just thought it would be, uh, worthwhile to have an agreement since we haven't had it. So, I guess any questions, I mean, if you've read it, if you've looked at it, uh, like I said, it, it's modeled pretty much precisely after Devil's Lakes, other than a few little provisions that were taken out because the city has, uh, yeah, they provide the growth fund portion for operating funds where we don't do that, or the sales tax percentage, uh, things, you know, basically, that was probably pretty close to the book, you know, maybe could help.
Looking for a motion to approve?
Uh, if, if you've read it and you're fine with the document, I guess, and it's been left over by Carrie, so I'm, I'm good with it.
I'm fine with it. Uh, move to approve the agreement between Ramsey County and Forward Devil's Lake.
Second. Okay, we have a motion in a second to approve the agreement for Devil's Lake.
Because one thing, we're gonna have a motion in a second on this every year.
Yes, correct, yeah, yeah, it's, it's, and the city does the same thing. They basically re-up every year on, uh, January ones, uh, so you'd have to make the motion in December, uh, just to say, "Yes, we want to continue in this agreement and continue." And in all honesty, we would know at that point if we didn't want to continue because we wouldn't have probably budget money in place then, so.
We've been marketing, watching this for quite a few years now, and I've been asked too, but, um, I hope it goes better than what it has in the last eight, you know, uh, long time.
That's the one.
Hopefully see some results, you know, I guess, maybe it's hard to get results, I don't know. It seems like you have a director now that's got some energy and.
I, I.
Yeah, so we can just hope for the best, is that right, or?
Well, I, I think job development is a, a tough gig to start.
Oh, yeah.
Because you throw a hundred things at the wall and you hope about three of them stay.
Yeah.
And we're all, we're, we're out there competing against other communities of our size here and in Kansas and every place else in the United States, plus Canada, but at the end of the day, if we don't have anybody out there selling Devil's Lake and knocking on doors, we're gonna get completely left behind. So, it's, it's, it's an investment and I, I'm not saying that we've had a lot of payoff, but we're trying to do, at least one of my, I wouldn't say one of my pushes, but one of the pushes I support is trying to do some little, smaller things that maybe we can, you know, we're trying to work with the UAS type stuff and those kind of things and offshoots, maybe we can get some of those small, two and three and four person businesses here that maybe would grow.
Or a lot of those sort of compound upon themselves, right? I mean, you get something that's UAS-related or something that's, you know, industry-related, whatever it is, you get more coming because.
Yeah, continuation of, of trying to get more small A type stuff in here, and UAS is just on the forefront of A right now too. So, if we can continue to maybe push it, Brad's been making pretty good arrangements of that and has worked a lot, quite a bit with Camp Craft and up to this point on the day, so I'm hoping it will, it'll pay off at some point, at least we're working at it.
I think we've been paying four mils for every day candy, and when I came on, a mill was worth thirty-two dollars a rock, you know, a hundred bucks or something.
Four things more, four is the cap.
Four is the cap.
Yeah, we're not at four mil. Was that about four?
Is that under the general?
One point.
One point four oh.
One?
One point four is what we're at right now, yeah. Make it straight around seven.
We could pay up to four Devil's.
We could pay up to four Devil's.
Well, okay.
Okay. Further discussion on the motion.
Is, is there any way that we can, can get them to come to our means? Because it says here, you know, "Keep aggressive progress." It seems, it seems like we don't find out anything until it's crashing and burning.
How about quarterly?
That quarterly would be wonderful.
I, I would, I'm a little.
We don't, we don't hear about anything until it's crashing and burning. And I, I wanna, I wanna know before that happens.
Hold on, I, I didn't get on until everything was kind of.
Yeah.
Passed already, so I kind of do it too, so I apologize if I haven't kept you abreast.
No, 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 no.
But, no, I, I, Brad likes talking to people.
As I said, he seemed very enthusiastic, I'd love to see him once.
Yeah, I, I would bring it up with him and, and I'll see if he can, uh, make it at least quarterly. I'll be working with him, I, I don't foresee why you would have any problem with it with that, so. Okay, further discussion.
Well, one point four would be what? Oh, we're gonna like, what, seventy-five there?
Well, it's a rural mill, JDA is rural mill, so that'd be what, thirty, you know, be like forty thousand times one point four. It's probably sixty something. I don't know, yeah, geez.
Okay, that's all right.
Okay, further discussion of the motion. Seeing none in favor vote by saying aye.
Aye.
Pull the same sign, motion carries. Is this the?
Fifty-five thousand.
Fifty-five thousand. Is this the official copy, man?
Um, I gotta change.
Okay, I'll let you know, then I'll sign this and agree then.
Did you say a rural mill was worth fifty-five thousand?
No.
No, that's, that's what they, that's the one.
Fifty-five divided by one point four would give me the rural.
Thirty-nine.
Thirty-eight change, I think it is. Yeah, okay, uh, discussion on opioid litigation. Um, we talked a little bit about this last time, obviously, but Carrie's here, so we wanted to kind of push it off until we, if you're curious, your opinion on what we possibly could.
Well, I reached out, I reached out, um, to Aaron Burst, who is the attorney of the Association of Counties, because I was curious to hear some more from the Attorney General's office as it relates to statewide litigation versus county by county, municipality by municipality. Um, we collectively, a group of state attorneys who have counties that haven't made decisions either way have asked for some further discussion with the Attorney General's office. Aaron Burst was gonna try and reach that, that has not happened as of yet. Um, I did, however, receive a copy from Mr. Burst of a document, a letter that was sent by, we sent him to Burley County Commission. In there, he, um, indicates kind of his feelings on counties going off on their own to do the lawsuits, and so I thought I would share that with commissioners. Um, essentially, uh, Mr. Stenjum indicates that he's started the litigation of the issue. They've only gone after the one manufacturer, Purdue Pharma, um, but the state can at any time sue additional manufacturers and distributors and would likely do so. The caveat to that is the state has also been invited to the table. Um, it's the Ohio Federal District Court, who the judge is involved in all of the consolidated cases that, um, are going on throughout the nation. They've all kind of been assigned to one federal district court in Ohio, and that federal judge has said, settlement talks, settlement talks, this is a huge beast affecting everybody in the nation. Um, North Dakota, through the Attorney General in that lawsuit, has also been invited to, to the table to talk about national settlement negotiations. Um, he indicated also that the state's claim is violations of North Dakota's consumer protection law and only the state has that claim. And, and the bottom line ultimately is whatever happens with all of these pending litigations, there's going to be one recovery pot. And that, I think, kind of to me says the concern is out of the one pot, you know, everybody's gonna have a piece of the pot if it's a successful settlement. So, if you have multiple counties, multiple municipalities, multiple states at the table, all taking out of that pot, the more attorney firms that are involved in that pot then decrease the fundage. So, for example, and this is just an example for math, um, say there's a five million dollar pot and there's, there's five people vying for that pot, um, and then. there's, there's five people vying for that pot, um, and then six and seven people come into that pot. Six and sevens attorneys are also going to take a chunk of that pot there by decreasing the amount that gets spread out in the settlement. And so, that was the concern that I saw in this letter that was sent to um, commissioners in Burley County. Um, he did also indicate, Wayne Sinnum in this letter that, um, just want this to the right section. That it will be a statewide focus, so whatever piece of the pot is received, assuming there is some successful settlement, that it would be um, monies to go to the affected counties and cities across North Dakota consistent with the effect of the opioid crisis in each community. Cities and counties will have direct input in North Dakota's recovery process. So that is what the Attorney General's office has indicated. Feels that the separate lawsuits may impede or delay the ability for the state to expedite recovery on behalf of all the North Dakota citizens. So, that is the position, I, I would assume that was a letter from June. I would assume that is still a position of the Attorney General's office. We have reached out and asked for further discussions with them, we haven't had that arranged yet. So, and when I say we, I mean collectively state attorneys across the state who haven't made a decision, but we're actively looking at lawsuits. I think that it, certainly when you have choices on the table, it's beneficial for everybody to hear the information. I know a few of us were at the Northeast Nine Commissioner, a meeting, where some attorneys from some law firms who are extensively involved with litigating with the opioid, opioid issue, came, they did a presentation, they shared with us um, kind of the manner of how the claims would proceed. They indicated what retainer agreements might look like. And if the county is interested in hearing from them, I would encourage and invite at least to them so they can present to the whole county. So if you're gonna make a decision, you wanna be informed, you wanna hear from them, you, you wanna know, you wanna be able to weigh the pros and the cons, so.
How soon do, you think we need to make a decision?
I think that if you're considering going out on your own lawsuit with a law firm, you should invite those folks here fairly soon. So they can do their presentation and then discussions can be had about the manner that the county wants to proceed.
Kerry, if we don't go off on our own, would we automatically be included in whatever litigation this, uh, the state is already pursuing?
That is um,
That's the question.
That is the ultimate question. Now, there's assurances that I'm reading through these letters, and uh, Mr. Stenjam did also present to the state's attorneys conference, I wanna say last January twenty seventeen, if I recall right, um, that this will be something that will be a benefit to everybody in North Dakota. This is something that, um, you know, he's working towards for the benefit of everybody. And we will all see that, but we had some further questions, we being the state's attorneys.
Yeah, and, and Kerry and I have discussed this a little bit, but the question would be, if, if we as a county, at least how I perceive it, I'm not gonna speak for Kerry. If, how I perceive is, if we decide to go with an individual firm similar to the firm or the firm that gave us the presentation at the Northeast Nine, then, we would more than likely, I would guess, be precluded from the state settlement. But, we would have the settlement fr- through them, but then we would have to pay attorney's fees at whatever retainer fee would be. If we decide not to go that route and we go the state's route, the concern or the question would be similar to the tobacco settlement. When they get the money, the money can't be appropriated out to the counties and cities and municipalities without the legislature approving the settlement, or the, the payout essentially. At that point, what are they gonna do with it? Kinda like with the tobacco settlement, they took sixty percent of the money and put it in the water. So, the question is, what would happen at the state level previous to it flowing down to the counties and other municipalities? And, and we honestly, at this point in time, have no clue how that's gonna play out.
In both of those questions, we don't have an answer to.
So we're kinda shooting in the dark.
We've been asking and have asked for meetings with the A G office, and we still don't have an answer to those two questions.
Okay, City of Devil's Lake has signed on with the, the group that presented at the Northeast Nine. Uh, as well as Burley County, the other ones that signed on with that group.
The cast went with someone else.
The cast went with somebody else.
I know Ward County has decided to just stick with the A G and not do anything, I don't know, they were visiting with Grant Forks County, but I don't know if they've make, made a decision yet.
And, and I agree, agree completely with you, Adam, but, you know, waiting out for the state and, and seeing where the legislature decides to pay you out the money, um, yeah.
Well, I guess I look at it from the aspect of, this is obviously not the same as the tobacco settlement. The tobacco settlement, I could see where they took a certain percentage of the dollars, because there's only so much education and things like that you can use it for. So it's understandable, the settlement was big enough, they took some of those dollars and used it in another place where they needed it, net offset, and that's not a bad thing. But they could have used additional dollars from that settlement to pay for increase, but for public health, where we all know there's necessary dollars that need to go there. Um, you know, and, so my question is, what is, if, if we do get a settlement, what's it gonna look like and where are those dollars gonna go to? Cause we know that, I guess locally here, I, I, I can't speak for everyone, but I'm pretty sure we're all on the same page, that if they get a settlement, we could use every last dollar they get to pay for rehab and, and treatment and incarceration costs and social services costs and everything that's going with this whole thing. And the question is, are we gonna get the, are we gonna get all of it? And, and I,
We're gonna get anything.
Are we gonna get anything? We don't know what the answer is.
There's no guarantee we'll get anything.
No, and the, the, the number that was thrown out, I don't know if it's something that's realistic or not, but the, the lawyers at that meeting said something like between, us, a county the size of Burley can probably see anywhere between one point three and one point five million dollars. Correct. So then you get that, and then you take twenty percent off the top of the repainer, and so they'll probably end up in that million dollar range. So a county like ours, what are we talking, I don't know, half a million, three hundred thousand plus a ten?
Would be appropriated off the population?
Well, no, basically how it works is, is they come in with their team, if you sign up with the firm we talked to, they come in with their team and they actually redevelop, we can show all the costs. So, any car- any incarceration costs, any costs through um, state's attorney, the sheriff's department, anything,
Social services.
Social services, anything we could say, this possibly came because of opioid epidemic, can all be thrown into the settle, or not the settlement, but the uh,
The claims.
The claims.
But we have to have proof that this particular case was involved that, right?
That is their specialty. That is what they assured us, that their specialty is opioid litigation, as it relates to manufacturers as well as distributors.
Yeah, and how the state's gonna break up any part of money they receive is also a question. You know, will they do it by population, will they do it by, we show them what we feel our cost has been, I mean, there's a lot up in the air, so. Like I said, we're kinda shooting in the dark on this whole thing.
Like, Rhonda, have you had any information on this?
I, I was at the same meeting that Kerry and Adam, and I, I believe Mark and Jeff and probably,
The city, you mean?
No, at the Northeast Nine, who came to listen to it.
What trip the cities, Kerry, you go with this all?
They were in contact with their contact person, uh, Curtis Olson, you know, former Senator Olson, and uh, they gave up a presentation and they decided on the spot to go along with it. I, I can't speak to why they decided so quickly, but that's what they decided to do. Um, you know,
Is there a deadline?
They didn't give us a deadline. Um, this, this federal judge that is in charge of structuring what this could possibly look like, I think has communicated to all players involved at this stage that he expects, uh, correctly, I'm wrong, Adam, or Rhonda, from that meeting, that they had indicated settlement to be something done within like twelve or eighteen months to have these discussions and to be at the table. That is a very aggressive timeline, um, very aggressive timeline. When you consider, you know, just a standard felony timeline, you're talking to mass nationwide settlement, that's very aggressive, so.
It made it sound as though like, they're gonna start possibly settlement talks after the first of the year in that March timeframe. So I think we probably safely would have for probably that December, first of the year timeframe to make a decision how we, I mean, no action means we're under the state's control.
Okay, where, where's the money gonna come from?
For what?
A settlement.
Directly from the opioid manufacturer.
The manufacturer.
There's something like six manufacturers that are included on the main lawsuit.
There didn't, sure.
And I want to say that their profits, he had a really interesting chart, um, where they listed out these companies and then they had how much profits each company had made with the opioid,
They emailed that, no, they never did.
Vacation. No, they never did email it to us.
Yeah, we should, we should ask for it.
But it was, you know, if memory's certainly right, wasn't it, well, it was billions.
It was billions.
Um, and then the distributors themselves, so, I know they had indicated that the one that North Dakota was suing, um, under the Attorney General Office, Purdue, was kind of a lower level manufacturer.
I think they were the smallest manufacturer of goods.
Two of the big manufacturers, so.
But just by suing one of them, you get in on the settlement, this is, I think, and that's what the A G's approach was, if I sue, we'll get in on the big settlement and not have to go through all the work of suing all seven of them. Uh, uh, Mr. Olson uh, sent me an email the other day saying that his group is gonna be in-state. Uh, I don't know, I can't remember the dates, if they're gonna be in-state later, so I mean, if, if it's something we would be interested in hearing the presentation, we can. The only thing I would preface that with is by saying, uh, it would probably have to be a special meeting, cause they can't necessarily get here first of the, Tuesday. I mean, so if we, if we're interested in going, possibly looking at this, then we would have to probably set up a special meeting just to have them present to us. And it's an interesting presentation regardless if we move forward with it or not, just to see how it's all played out.
I'd, I'd like to have a meeting to hear them out at least.
And, and what I can do is I'll, I'll talk, uh, I'll email Mr. Olson and then see what dates are open, and then I can run it through Candy to see if we can find a date that would work for everyone, then, if that's okay with everyone. Cause I, I think it's worth listening to them, I don't know if that's the way we wanna go, but.
Did Kerry have, do you have an opinion based on what you know now, at all?
Not yet, until I get those two questions answered. Um, if we go forward on our own, are we automatically precluded, um, and then, whether, whatever other one I?
How is it stated? Yeah, just how, how is the state plan on breaking it out?
How, how, what is the proposal for breaking it out?
Cause they seem like they're miles ahead of the other. I mean, they already, they're going after all five, they've got cases pending.
No doubt, it is their specialty.
And they seem very aggressive at it.
No doubts, no doubt, no, the, the firms.
The companies.
The firms that we had a presentation with seem very aggressive.
Very aggressive, and I think that someone they were affiliated with kind of structured like the tobacco settlement nationwide is at that table. I mean, very, very experienced with these types of litigations, very much so.
I'd say let's, let's hear them out at least.
Is that okay with everybody? I mean, I, three of us have seen it, is that okay with you, and if we can make some work?
Well, how's your?
Here, here's what I would say, and this is going off of a lot of hypotheticals, so, like they indicated at that Northeast Nine meeting, you know, a county the size of Burley gets one point five, whatever, I'm just gonna throw it out there. So, what does that look like for Ramsey? Does that mean we're gonna get five hundred thousand? What does that mean? So, when you look at it in dollars and cents and what you choose to do with that if there was a successful settlement, how far can it go, what type of a thing can you put in place, and how sustainable is it at five hundred thousand dollars? To keep in mind, when it, when you're thinking about if a state's gonna roll out some type of a treatment thing or whatever, maybe that, just at the end of the day, you weigh it, what is something sustainable and what is something hypothetically that we could hold to receive?
There were a lawyer at the Northeast Nine?
There was, two of the law firms, two lawyers were there.
Two representatives of the law firms.
And two state's attorneys.
Yeah, Kerry and Elizabeth Cavill, other state's attorneys there too, so. Yeah, so.
But like I said before, I mean, they, they, Mr. Olson sent us again the link to the C D C's website, and hundred and twenty, twenty-four prescriptions for every hundred people in Ramsey County. Certainly, um, something that's, has been prescribed, I think that is twenty-six, some data from the C D C.
Well, and he did, he did preface it, that, that, you know, it could be some strong counties that are,
Right, and that's the theory, part of the theory.
And that's, and that's really reasonable to, to assume a portion of that, but still.
But even if it's half?
Right.
If it was fifty, you know, perfectly, I mean, that's, that's a lot of people, and I don't think that many people are in crime.
I think too, I think it's, and Rhonda, not, she may be able to give a stat too. How, how many, do we have information or stats on how many children we are seeing born addicted in the county, or no?
I don't have recent ones, I'm sorry, um, we, we, um,
We track pregnant women using.
Yep, and I, I don't have at the top of my head, and I don't wanna give you a number that I don't have. At one point, it was twenty-five percent.
It was, it's twenty-five, thirty percent, and maybe I'm wrong.
Just crossed thirty percent.
Okay, and so that is, I mean, this is the impact.
We know it's up there. Well, pregnant women using, not necessarily addicted, there's a difference.
The problem that no one tracks that, how do you have that, I mean, no one tracks that information. The Department of Health does not track it, there's not a, we, we get our statistics from the nurses when they call us, so, and that's just the babies born at this hospital, so I don't have a county-wide statistic, cause no one tracks it.
Sure, sure.
So I don't know what, what you're track, I don't know what the thirty percent is.
Well, and I just think it goes into what are the costs ultimately that we are potentially looking at as members of the, um,
Right.
You know, the medical costs, the, the long-term impacts, you know.
Oh, there's, there's physical costs in the school district, that's everything.
I mean, they're just unmeasurable costs, so.
We know it's a problem, we don't know the per, you know, the number's perfect, but we know it's a problem.
Well, it's something we have a long time to, to discuss some of those things, as it, uh, we, as the litigation plays out, before we have our hands on it.
Okay, well, I'll keep Kerry in the loop and work with Candy, we'll try to get a date set and uh, and see if we can make it work, with that then. Okay. Uh, move on and we'll approve the list of bills.
Move to approve.
Second.
There's a motion in a second to approve the list of bills, we have further discussion on the list. Seeing none, roll call please.
Aye.
Sorry.
Who needs coffee?
Wakefield.
Aye.
Olson.
Aye.
Brown.
Aye.
Mike Tom.
Aye. Motion carries. Okay. We've stopped away a couple minutes technically till six o'clock. Do you start the hearing, we won't go into anything else between now and then, just, that'll take longer than six o'clock. Okay, being at six o'clock, we will start the uh, budget hearing for the preliminary twenty nineteen budget, uh, from the county's aspect. Obviously, we're here to hear, hear concerns, comments, questions, opinions. I'll, I'll preface it with just a little bit of information and facts about how the budget was put together. This year in Ramsey County, um, last year's mill was worth fifty-five thousand one hundred and sixty-one dollars and twenty-three cents. Uh, this year, a mill, uh, the valuations on property moved up slightly, so a mill will be worth fifty-eight thousand three hundred and sixty-nine dollars and twenty-three cents. Last year, uh, locally, we levied eighty-five point nine mills, uh, so we levy right around four point uh, seven three eight million dollars locally. Uh, this year, we're looking at, from the county's perspective, uh, levying ninety-six point two seven mills, which would equal out to about one point six one, or excuse me, five point six one nine million dollars locally. That's an increase of about eight hundred and eighty thousand, eight hundred and eighty-one thousand dollars locally. Just for, uh, and, and obviously the budget has ins and outs from state dollars coming in, federal dollars coming in, pass-throughs and things. Our total budget is ten points, it's right there, ten point uh, six oh six million, so right around, uh, you know, fifty-some percent of our total budget is actually levied locally. About the largest increases, and I'm sure you all have questions about them, but the largest increases locally, obviously, are uh, law enforcement center and housing of inmates. We also increased uh, on road and bridge, um, as well as county road fund. Uh, we increased dollars there to try to rebuild some of our uh, uh, carryovers, uh, to get prepared to pave again in twenty. And then some of the, some of the dollars locally, uh, that we don't necessarily have control over, other than overlooking their budgets, but they're separate entities. The health district had to go up because of decreased federal dollars passing back through to the, to our local district health unit, uh, so we had to fund it a little bit more locally. Uh, the water resources district, uh, budget moved up, uh, because they needed to increase dollars for preliminary engineering. on an Edmore Cooley project, uh, for drainage in the upper Edmore Cooley area. Uh, but before they can actually do the project, they have to do preliminary engineering, so they had to increase their budget for that. Obviously, we have some slight increases in county agent costs because of, uh, the, uh, decrease in extension funding from the state. And then pretty much most of it though comes in essentially increasing funds for, uh, trying to keep infrastructure up as well as unfortunately having to spend money on incarcerating individuals. From there, I guess, any other comments from the other commissioners before we start taking questions and comments? That's just kind of a brief overview, you're more than welcome to ask us any question you would like when it pertains to the budget and we'll try to give you an answer, or we obviously want as much feedback as is humanly possible before we make our final decisions. The final decisions on the budget have to be made the first meeting of October because all of the mills and everything have to be certified on the tenth of October, uh, for then next year's budget, so. I'll open up the floor and if anybody has any questions or comments, just raise your hand and I'll turn the floor over to you then.
Valuations cannot be discussed.
Oh, what'd you say?
Valuations cannot be discussed.
We're past the phase of being able to change valuations. If you have a problem with, oh, we, we can hear concerns on valuation, so we can feed that in for next year, but. That's all done, uh, the valuation process is closed in July at the state.
I did have a question, this might be a dumb question, but it's what, what came to mind when I got this.
No question, just go ahead.
I got this on the same day that I got the devil's like voting for the, um, for the school to have their addition and of course, I'm really much in support of that as well. But what I'm looking at then is, I'm already gonna have this increase in my taxes for this and that would just be efficient for that, so. Those don't figure in together in any way, shape or form, it's going to be two separate increases, right?
That would be correct, yes. Yes, uh, it's on, I mean, I guess from, I can't say from my perspective, but, you know, it's unfortunate they came out the same day, but at the same time, uh, obviously, if you're voting in favor or opposed to the, the school's, um, setup, that's a twenty-year bond. There's twenty-year bonds, you'd be paying an increase in your taxes every year for twenty years, whereas this is a one-year increase and we honestly don't know how we're gonna budget for twenty twenty at this point until the twenty nineteen legislative session meets and then we'll have some more, uh, you know, feedback from the state on where the dollars are gonna come. If the infrastructure thing passes, we'll have additional dollars for infrastructure coming out from the state, but we honestly don't know how the twenty twenty budget is gonna look perfectly now until we start budgeting next year.
And Adam, we did have a deadline for that. The deadline was August thirty-first, that we had to have those out.
Yeah, and it all got moved up a month this year.
Yeah.
So.
I was glad to have the information, I mean, so I'm not voting without that, without knowing that, you know.
Exactly, exactly, but just so you know, we, we did have a deadline.
Yeah, but two separate issues.
Exactly, exactly.
Further discussion? Yes, sir.
I got, I got my tax statement here and this is the worst land I've got. And I got some land in, this is Loober Township and I got two quarters of Liddia. And on this one, it went up eighteen percent. And I got forty-five acres out of that quarter, that's till. I can show you the map of U S D A, they got what's tillable, not tillable. And a lot of that, well, I used to have about thirty more acres, but it's flooded. So, I pretty much got a hundred acres of water. You know, I got a couple permanent ones, but I got extra thirty acres of being flooded. And anyway, and then I got a hill right here, it's highly erodible, so you can't farm it. You can see where all the old till is. And that went up eighteen percent, it went up like a hundred and two dollars. And I'm looking and saying, why is my poorest land going up the most? And I only got forty-five acres of tillable land there out of a quarter, that's not much.
No, that's not, that's a very good question.
And, and I mean, it, it went up a hundred and two dollars, went up eighteen percent. And I thought we were supposed to get a break on inundated waters and stuff like that. As far as I'm concerned, if you got water, you should get a break on it. I got some land where I got forest and I pay fifty cents an acre on it, cause they're trying to keep the forest. And that's the way I look at it, if you got water on your land, it should be a modifier. I shouldn't be taxed the same as people are farming the next quarter over. It's like my other couple quarters in Liddia, I'm not hollering about them, cause they didn't go up that much, I'm farming them. Or I'm not farming, but I'm bringing them out and getting income. Here, I got a quarter that I'm not getting much income and my taxes are going up.
I, I can't give you an answer.
If you wanna look at the map, I can show you.
No, I trust you.
No, I got one question, is being farmed, your quarter that went up eighteen percent?
Four, just forty-five acres of it.
Forty-five acres.
And, and actually, sometimes the forty-five acres, you can't get, add some of that either, if it's wet.
I can't give you an answer for this year, obviously, uh, the change is the change, but have you ever considered trying to go through the county soils committee? We have a county soils committee, they'll take a look at those specific questions if you feel it's gone up too much. And they can also then use an inundated, uh, change and they can roll those acres out to a very slow level of taxation if you can't farm it.
Well, I already got about, I already got about forty acres on inundated, so I guess I'll have to put more. Cause it's, this is all water here and this, and this is all water. We talked about soils, a little bit soils, I got land in Walts County also. I went to the soils and I didn't get no satisfaction. I got land in W R Ps, as you know what, what, W R Ps, what land is it, bro? For the flooding, okay? But they're still taxing me as farmable land, does that make sense? I went to the soils committee and the county commissioners, you just don't get no.
But you took the thirty-year payment, right?
I did, but in the thirty years, the taxes will take it all.
Well, I don't know the particular case, there's other W R P land in Ramsey County that went to the soils committee and none of it was approved.
Right, I understand that, but in thirty years, you know, say you got thirty thousand and you pay a thousand dollars a year for taxes, it's gonna eat it up, plus you got upkeep too.
Would you put your total tax on that quarter?
In this quarter? Well, last year was five hundred and sixty-seven dollars and eighty-six cents. This year's for, uh, the next year, it's gonna be six hundred and seventy dollars and twelve cents. Went up a hundred and two dollars, eighteen percent increase.
Like Adam says, you should go to the soils committee and I sit on the soils committee for county and we made adjustments to that.
Well, I'm just saying that when you've got, when your land's covered with water, there should be modifiers too.
Yeah, they're in, they're in.
Well, I live in Manafort, so I made a special trip up here. And, and anyway, I mean, I look at it, this is my worst quarter of land and I got the highest increase. You know, I'm, I'm in playing about the other two quarters of Liddia, you know, you know what I'm saying?
Yeah.
And, and we do have modifiers in the system and in all honesty, something might have been missed in the modification of the, of the land too. So, if we, if we talk, I mean, and like I said, I, I don't know if we can make an adjustment for this year, but to make sure that it's right next year, I talked with Beth, our, our tax director, as well as we can direct you to the right places to go through the soils committee and stuff, hopefully.
Well, so, when is the meeting for the soils?
Soils usually meet first week of April, thereabouts.
Just once a year.
Once a year.
Really?
Yep.
But I know there was W R P land that came before the soils before and none of it was approved, because they've taken a thirty-year payment, so.
I understand, it's, it's not as, it's not such a good deal because you get a payment
I agree with you.
And they take the taxes out of it, right where you pay upfront on that too, so.
W R P doesn't tell you that when they have you sign a paper, so.
Right, so if you're in a twenty-five percent racket, you gave twenty-five percent of a way around way. And, and that land, it'll never be farmed again, cause it's by Red River, we get flooded there a lot. There's a lot of miles and stuff like that, so.
That'd be good, Adam, to go with that soils and, and all that.
Uh, like I said, I didn't have much luck in Walts County, so.
No.
That one quarter sounds like it worked to me, you know, like you got a good page, I think.
Well, it's just that I, I look at it and say, you know, why do I have to pay for water?
I agree with you, yeah.
Yeah, and unfortunately, I, it's a cop out to say it, but our hands are tied to a point on how we have to go through cause the state basically lays out that this has to be done by this state and this state and this state, we can't make amendments after.
Okay, I got a question to ask, well, if you're in the soils. Okay, say I had thirty acres that we used to, they used to be able to farm and those inundated, but I got pretty close to a hundred acres of water on that land. So, could I put the whole hundred acres in, inundated, inundated or not?
If it's all underwater, I suppose you can.
Yeah, but I mean, it's floo, it never was farmed. You still think you could have.
Could look at it.
Because I wasn't doing that, because.
I looked at these individually.
I, I, I didn't put it all in because, uh, you know, I just put what was farmed, that's the way I looked at it.
And I'm the only county commissioner there and the rest of them are producers.
Right.
You know, landowners that are there.
Right.
On the committee and they do a good job, they do very good job of screwed guys, you know, looking, they know where, so. I think it'd be well worth your time. Talk to Beth Black at the tax office, she would let you know what it is and it's usually about the first week of it.
Okay, first week of April. Okay, well, that was my thing is just that, I, uh, my worst quarter went up the most.
That's a reasonable question, we appreciate the comment.
Thank you, thanks for your time.
Anybody else?
Thank you.
Anybody else? You're pondering.
I'm curious about, uh, did the state take over the social service part of the county budget?
Yes.
And when was, is that, how long ago was that?
Last year would've been our first year of funding from the state, yes.
So, so wasn't, was, were there mills for that or?
Yes, there were, there were twenty mills in the budget that were specific social service mill levy. Those twenty mills disappeared, but we were at about thirty-four mills the last year, um, we levied for social services. So, we were actually pulling about fourteen mills out of the general, I believe is what it was in that last year, Rhonda could correct me. And, and so those mills rolled down, I think my first year on the commission, we were up in that a hundred and fifteen to a hundred and twenty mill range. So, we're actually down about twenty, and that was just from the county side, not without Garrison and soil on it. So, we're actually down twenty to twen, you know, twenty to thirty mills in that range still, when we were levying for our social services. We, we haven't seen, we've seen the savings completely, not completely from social services, because when, when the bill was passed to take the social services cost over at the state, the bill was initially written with a twenty seventeen, or twenty fifteen baseline and escalators every year because, you know, obviously, there's been changes in wages, changes in health insurance, all of those things increase every year, you know that year over year. Uh, even with just two percent inflation they changed. When they broke the bill down and stripped it down, they took the escalators out and just gave us twenty fifteen dollars. So, we're getting about one point nine nine six million dollars from the state to pay for social services and our actual costs next year are in that two point five million dollar range, so we still have to make up a half million dollars, which we haven't had to levy for, cause we had enough fund balance that we were able to spend fund balance on it this year and for twenty eighteen as well as nineteen. So, we haven't had to levy any mon, levy any dollars for it. Now, we don't know how they're gonna fund it out of the nineteen session going forward, if there'll be escalators, if it'll stay at the twenty fifteen levels, that's where that twenty twenty budget is, we can't give any answers going forward, other than to say, social services has been completely paid for in the eighteen and nineteen budget out of existing dollars as well as the state's budgeting.
So, with that coming out of there, then, like, that, that sheet you sent out doesn't show anything, any change for that?
No.
So, now, so then is, without, I mean, did the state take something else away or did the budget go up? Did the budget go up, those mills plus the raise?
They took twelve percent mill deduct away.
That was.
And every county and every state was getting that, and they took that away. So, that made our mills go up to replace that.
That was one point seven million, twelve percent property tax with one point seven million.
We actually ended up in Ramsey County better than other counties. For instance, Towner County, I think they only got, you know, we were getting a twelve percent straight across the board buy down before the social services. We actually ended up at about, I think it was sixteen percent buy down with the social services cost takeover. So, we actually were one of the probably, I don't know, half dozen counties that actually ended up better because of the social services buy down. I think what you're asking, and.
I know what you're going, I have one.
Say if you're, say, tell me if I'm correct in, in saying that you're asking where did the increase come from this year from seventeen, essentially?
Yeah, I mean, if that was in there.
The twelve percent mill buy down that the state was giving us back, that went away, so we had to make that difference up. And then, one other thing.
The credit that they were, that showed on our tax statements from the state.
Right.
Yes, that's wrong on there, yes, that's wrong.
And then the further compound thing with the law enforcement center, by century code, we can only put ten mills on to the law enforcement center and that's not covered at all. We're just about ten more and I don't know if that's gonna make it for next year.
Yeah, like, like I said, last year, we, we levied twelve point seven three eight million, this year we're at five point six one nine million. That's an eight hundred and eighty-one thousand dollar increase. Now, we've had slight increases in places because of wages, actually, we've had a few decreases when it actually comes to the mill, if you hold steady because of the valuation capture. The increases are basically six hundred thousand dollars to the law enforcement center, hundred and seventy-seven thousand dollars to the road fund, uh, different road fund mill levies, and the rest of it is just basically a little bit here, a little bit there, you know, for slight increases across different things. Actually, you know, so it's, it's, our law enforcement budget was one point two million dollars for this year, we're looking at one point eight million for next year. And it's, it's strictly cost of incarceration because our mandates have gone crazy, essentially. Uh, I just have the numbers in front of me and it's probably good to stay, stay here too. In twenty, the first year I was on the commission when I was elected was fifteen, but I was elected in fourteen. In twenty fourteen, we had ten thousand, one hundred and ninety-one mandates that we were paying for. This year, we're gonna be projected at fifteen thousand, six hundred and forty-four. So, we're up thirty-three percent just in those four years. If you go back just a few years before that to twenty eleven, so seven, eight years ago now, we've doubled in the amount of people we're housing at the prison. That's where the costs are, I mean, it's plain and simple, it's, it's where the costs are. If you break down the total county budget, I think it's written down for someplace, we're down, we'll go, I can, I can, I can reset it from memory. So, if we're talking just law order plus infrastructure, so public safety and infrastructure. The sheriff's budget is seven hundred and seventy-seven thousand, which is pretty much all locally assessed. The L E C is one point eight, the state's attorney's budget is two hundred and ninety-one thousand. That gives us two point eight six eight million dollars just for public safety. Then you add an infrastructure on our levy is nine hundred and twenty thousand, gets you to three point seven eight eight million. So, sixty-seven point four percent of our total mills that we levy locally goes to infrastructure or something to do with law, law and order and incarceration. So, it doesn't unfortunately give us a lot of wiggle room because we don't get to choose, we get to choose what roads we wanna do. We don't get to choose how many people are getting put in jail. Other than we, we, we work with the judges as best we can to try to do pre-trial diversion stuff, to try to say, if you're gonna come back to jail or come back to your trials, we'll put you on a bracelet. We try to do as many of those things as is humanly possible to keep the cost down, but we've continued to see more people going into the prison.
Finger in the damn.
Yeah, we're basically a finger in the damn trying to do stuff to keep the cost down and it's, it's not doing what needs to be done.
A lot of this budget, we're making up that twelve percent mill deduct that the state would give us, you know.
And basically, they're doing what they did before, it's just in a different, they're doing it with social services and that worked out good for Ramsey County.
Yeah, we actually ended up better because of it, yes. But we're continuing to see those increased costs that we basically have, and social services is one of them. We don't have a, really a control over, we're a help community, you know? We know that people come into town to do things, we know that people come and there's drug trades going on here. We're trying our best to balance everything, but at the end of the day, if the state's not gonna put money in on the front to try to stop it, we're gonna incur the cost on the backside. You didn't, you weren't here, we had the legislators here from four thirty to five thirty and we kinda hammered that home on them. We need additional help when it comes to whether it's addiction treatment services, whether it's pre-trial diversion type stuff, whether it's having to house people, because at some point in time, we're gonna hit our cap on mills. I mean, and it's, I, I hate, I, I don't try to be, you know, alarmist or anything like that, but if you look at the last four years that I've been on the commission, we've, we've increased our budget for the L E C right around a million dollars. We only have, right now, fourteen mills available and we're capped out. So, if we stay on this track, by the time I'm up for reelection, then probably be, probably defeated. We'll be capped out.
You use it up for your campaign.
Yeah, we'll, we'll be, we'll, we'll be capped out. We won't have any more places to derive income to pay for what we're paying for. And the unfortunate portion of it is, is I think everybody at this table would say, we'd much rather take those dollars and use them to help people instead of send them in a can. But we, we can't get ahead of that curve without putting them there first. We talked about this at social services, saying, how can we maybe work around the system to try to give people those services? We talk about this at social services, saying, how can we maybe work around the system to try to give people those services? But it like, like Lucas said, it's a finger in the damn. When you have a hundred and twenty opioid prescriptions per one hundred people. Uh, and, and you get addicted essentially, I think what's the rate basically, if you're on opioids for like, what, three months, your addiction rate is something like eighty percent. So.
I got a friend that, with a, he was having back trouble and, and he claimed in two weeks he was.
Yes, you can get hooked in two weeks, very easily. And, and, and the problem with it is, is then at that point, they take your, they take the opioids away. Okay, you don't need them anymore. Well, you still need the hook. Well, then what do you do? Or do you go look on the street? So either somebody's bringing pills in from somewhere and selling them to you and we're catching all the drug task forces and those people. We had to go pick up a guy in Michigan not that long ago, who they picked up there and we had to bring him back.
State of Michigan.
State of Michigan, not Michigan, North Dakota. So we had to send, we had to send one of our deputies there to pick the guy up and bring him back.
Sometimes Michigan seems.
He absconded. Yeah. Luckily, the state picks up some of those costs.
I was pretty sure nothing would've happened in Nelson County.
Who dies? Maybe, the commissioner.
So, yeah, essentially at this point, we're hoping that the state can come through with some help. I mean, uh, what it comes down to is all it's doing is passing the cost on. They're proposing some infrastructure cost help, I guess.
Which would help.
Which would help. In my opinion, I'd much rather see that infrastructure dollars actually maybe cut down a little bit and actually put it into something like pre-diversion and those kind of things. That would be my thought, because I think we're in a pretty good space infrastructure wise in Ramsey County overall. We have no problems though, but.
And it's mostly the cost trajectory of the L E C that, that's the scary.
Thank you for coming.
Better concept.
Appreciate it.
You know, I mean, you, you can just, as Adam said, you can just see it. If, if trends continue, and I don't know that they will, right? I mean, it's possible that, that this escalation will, you know, be more of a, of an S curve than a continuation. But, but we can't really know that. It's just, gotta do what we can do now.
And, and, and I would also make the note that partial, a partial portion of that L E C budget for next year is to put in camera systems, call buttons, things of that nature. Because if we upgrade our systems there, the hope is that once we get everything straightened out, we can start to house some federal prisoners. And if we can house B I A and federal prisoners, that will be additional dollars in revenue coming in that will help hopefully counteract our costs. Now, that's not gonna affect a factor, we're still picking up a ton of people. And we're still gonna have a bill there. The cup, the hope is, is that if we can bring in some additional revenue dollars, we can do the additional work that needs to be done there without having to take it out of property taxes. Because, you know, we're basically trying to play catch up. Uh, and then maybe, I, I don't see, you know, I can't speak for the L E C board, obviously, you know.
Go ahead, go ahead.
But I, I, I don't think, I don't think our.
Good job, just keep going.
Even, even, even if we, uh, even if we get federal prisoners back in, get B I A prisoners back in, I don't foresee our daily rate going down anytime soon because we're just, we're just basically trying to keep our heads above water and play catch up to get the facility up to snuff.
Curious, handed me something here a while back, and our average daily population at the jail in two thousand and eleven was twenty one prisoners for the year.
For Ramsey.
For Ra- just Ramsey County. True. And in two thousand and eighteen, our average daily uh, population there, Mr. Ramsey County was forty three prisoners per day, for the year. So it's more than doubled in seven years. And so at seventy five dollars a day, that adds up quite a bit over the year, you know?
That works.
The drug enforcement task force we put in place, you know, county and city, it's working, you know, it's working.
Catching.
Yeah. So that's what we need to do.
Yeah.
I know there's a consequence, but people don't want, like drugs on the street, we don't want them in the schools. You know, we're sure of that, so. I don't know what else to say, I mean. Like we said earlier, the twelve percent mill deduct takeaway.
Well, and I think if you could, I think if you could show that to everybody, I mean, I understand that we need our roads and that, that's a problem you can't control. Are you?
Right.
You're doing the best you can with. So, yeah, so my question was, you know, where did that other savings go? What if it went to offset?
Yeah, and the guy who helped us with that, let everybody know, is sitting next to you, you know, and I'm sure he's gonna do a very good job on the radio, so.
I'm sure he will.
I thought our other lady from the paper would be here tonight, but we might have to for murder ourselves. Go visit with Louise?
Well, we can, we can talk about it. Yeah, and.
But I think like you say, John, I think it's a very. You know, let the people know that, you know, we're making up for something the state took away and we got social service funding taken care of, that helped a lot. But, you know, it was a win-win for Ramsey, but, you know, it's still, we gotta come up with something under twelve percent.
And, and, uh, you know, we, we talked a bit with the legislators. I've been trying to pull information in from other sources where it comes to, you know, total incarcerations and those kind of things. Because the, the question is, obviously, are, we're, uh, we're housing more people, but are we picking up, up, up the same percentage or proportion of more people? Are we, are we convicting more people or is the state not housing them for us? Uh, are we holding them longer before they get into the D O C R system? Because if we can show that we're holding people longer than we used to, I think that makes our case that the costs that we're incurring should be incurred by the state and not us. So we have to look at that locally and see where we're at percentage wise because, I, I, I shared this at the, between legislators. If you look at, for instance, back in twenty twelve, we had eight thousand one hundred and seventeen mandates, we had six hundred and seventy five criminal prosecutions that year. So that equals out, and this isn't perfect, obviously, we don't know, but those weren't convictions, were they? Those were just?
Those were charges.
Charges.
Yep.
Charges filed, six hundred and seventy five cases filed that year. So that's twelve point oh two mandates at the jail per case filed. This year, we're on pace for fifteen thousand six hundred and forty four mandates, eight hundred and thirty two cases filed, that's eighteen point eight mandates. So are, are, do we have things we can do, maybe, uh, you know, more, more ankle bracelets, more bonding people out if they're not, you know, a flight risk? Uh, you know, is the state putting pressure down on us to hold people longer than they have previously and that's increasing our costs? We have to look at all those things and say, can we make the case that you should be helping us? Because we're incurring more costs than we have in the past, even though we're not doing anything more than trying to keep everybody in our community safe, which is a reasonable thing to do. At least in my mind.
And if you can put that together and go to the session, they'll listen to that.
Yeah, and that would be the hope. And then we're gonna continue to work with our legislators to, to push that, if we can put those numbers together. The hope is though.
Thank you.
Yep.
I'll try to hang out.
John, for state analysis, everyone? You'll listen to us.
I like it.
Any, any further comments or questions, because there's a bunch of, I guess. Well, I thought we were gonna get yelled at way more.
You're jealous.
Told me this morning.
Come on, where's all the mad people? I thought we were gonna have some pitchforks.
I guess, I guess.
They don't need all, they're on the phone.
I was gonna say, maybe, maybe they're just all in my voicemail list, because that's where they're at.
Well, I, I, I.
And I invited them.
No, that's good. And I was hoping we would get more people because I think it's good when we talk back and forth.
Yep.
Um, we learn a little bit, like the gentleman's problem, the public lens, a little bit about the things that we're trying to deal with from our side of things. And, and hopefully we can try to work something out that works better than we're, is usually the goal. So, okay, if there's no other comments, questions, anybody wanna shake some change out of their pockets and help us out, that'd be, you know, welcome. I guess, uh, do I have to slide anything close to hearing? The hearing is closed tonight. I appreciate, we appreciate everybody's comments and input, thanks all. Um, from there, let me get my other piece of paper back in front of me. Yes, visitors and delegations. Does anybody have anything else they would like to visit about? We do have a few visitors here. Okay, hearing none. Announcements. Does anybody have some fun announcements?
I do. Um, I just wanted to announce that, uh, the state's attorney office received a grant, a voca grant for victims of crime act. Provides funding for services for crime citizens. Uh, I believe we got thirty three thousand two hundred and sixty four dollars and Kim will shoot me if she's watching this, because she didn't want public recognition. I gave her the credit, she, um, she learned everything that needed to get done, she went out, she got it, I said, good luck, here you go. And she officially can now be a successful grant writer under her belt, so.
Hey, congratulations.
Good. Good deal.
That was my announcement.
I like it when it's good announcements, that's a good thing. Does anybody else have an announcement in the commission aspect?
Climate commission, eight o'clock.
Eight o'clock, plenty. Okay. Uh, the only thing I would make as an announcement is, uh, I'm sure you guys are all aware, the bridge went in today. We actually hit the date, the bridge was there. Uh, they, uh, it was kinda fun. I went and watched, I got to see the last section put in. Um, they started, the, the crane and the bridge was there at eight A M. They started actually setting it at eleven and the last section went in and was getting bolted together at one thirty. So it's that quick that it goes in. Oh, that's amazing. Um, if anybody has a chance, go out, take a look at it, it's before they start to close in the enacments and everything, it's really quite interesting. Excuse me, how the thing is built and bolted together, so it's, it's really neat. Yeah, they had a whole group of LTAP people out there from, uh, different highway superintendents and stuff, looking at it, uh, learning about how it was put together. Since it's hopefully something we can all use as a cost savings instead of having to redo all of our bridges, so.
Somebody take some movies?
Uh, yeah, they were taking pictures and I, I'll tell you one thing, I was really impressed by the crane guys. Those guys were, they rigged that sucker up and ran that thing right over the top and set her down within that.
Do what they were doing.
Yeah, Juan Zed was, was doing the crane, they were.
We, we could have, uh, speaking of, of LTAP, we had a presentation from International Water Institute at our water, joint water board. About, they're doing a, uh, additional enhancements to the lightherd projects that they did years back. Um, throughout the river basin, which we're fortunate enough to be. Sometimes they include it, sometimes they don't. But Chuck Britz and I, an associate, came up and, and gave a presentation to us. What they're doing is, is gonna be really beneficial for county commission and I wish I would've known a little more in depth about what they're presenting on because I would've invited Kevin and, and maybe a few other highway superintendents from around the basin. But what they're doing is, is mapping everything out, they're getting, they're trying to get a, a current updated inventory list of culvert sizes, bridge sizes, things like that, throughout the basin, whether it be a county road, highway, state highway, township, two-track quarry trail, whatever. Um, and so what they're doing then is they're creating a lightherd map set where they can go in and you point a, a dot down the road where you wanna think you need this culvert or, or wanna hit culvert. And what it does is it figures out the watershed that, how big that watershed is for that road and for that culvert, for that bridge. And it'll, uh, then it'll pull up a little drop down window for what type of moisture event, whether it be a ten year, twenty five. Um, based on township or county roads, you know, each has a different threshold for.
Yeah, for what size of sizing of culvert it is.
Exactly, so it's really kind of a, a beneficial tool, tool when they get it all done. Instead of hiring an engineer to go up there and survey it and, and map it all out and come up with an, okay, this is the size of the culvert. You know, you need a couple clicks of the mouse and, uh, boom, you're done. It's got the watershed for you and, uh, how much, uh, moisture you can figure out coming through there and whatever rain, that moisture that you can anticipate.
That's great.
Yeah.
That's very cool.
Gonna be really cool once it's all, um, you know, and Chuck's been working on this over on the Minnesota side of the border on the river. Um, for years and I saw a presentation years back and I said, geez, we really need this over in, in North Dakota. And he said, well, we're, we're working on it and it's finally coming this way, so, yeah. Be a really cool tool once it's all completed.
I have, uh, two quick announcements. One is the, uh, reading garden for the library, they're, they were putting up the, the surrounding fence for it today. Um, so that's basically the last, the last major step and it's done, more or less. Uh, looks great. Um, I, I think they still need to put in the benches and there's gonna be an outdoor chess table. But once that's all up, I mean, it'll be, it'll be completed and I was pleased that we were able to, to raise the money to get it all done. Private donation and everything, so that's exciting. Um, and the other one is, I will not be in attendance at the next regular Ramsey County commission meeting because I will be in Zanzibar.
Zanzibar, wow, awesome.
Make sure you get your malaria shot.
What's come down? I have yellow fever and typhoid and hepatitis A.
Dicky fever? And I'm sitting next to you?
You didn't dig that along for a shot?
I gotta eat that something. Charlotte's food.
That was tasty. Okay, any further announcements?
State auditors will be here Tuesday and Wednesday next week.
What are you looking at me for?
Come visit.
Do I have to be there when it happens?
Ken told me so, but.
I'm not going anywhere. Just got so I didn't worry, nothing important.
Good luck, Ken. All the support.
You got it. Let me take you out for a drink, basically, what, Tuesday, what'd you say?
Tuesday and Wednesday.
Well, Wednesday, we'll take you out for a drink. Okay, any other announcements?
Just so I don't feel lonely, L E C tomorrow morning.
Mark's got.
There we got ours.
Mark's got something. All right, uh, seeing none for?
Eight o'clock, nine o'clock.
Eight o'clock.
Eight o'clock.
Where are your?